Roll call. Counselor Mackey?
Present.
Counselor Gamble?
Present.
Counselor Burley?
Present.
Counselor Carlton?
Present.
Counselor McQueen?
Present.
Counselor Desai?
Present.
Counselor Patterson is running late. Warden Hicks?
Here.
Counselor Columbus sends her regrets. Counselor Kentner?
Present.
Counselor Keveney?
Present.
Counselor Boddy?
Present.
Counselor O'Leary?
Present.
Counselor Woodbury?
Present.
Counselor Millen?
Present.
Counselor Soever?
Present.
Counselor Bartnicki sends her regrets. Counselor Robinson?
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, counsel. Oh, sorry. That's all right. There I am, okay. Do we have any declaration of pecuniary interest, or I should say, interest? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Looking at item 5A, County Council and Committee of the Whole minutes dated November 13th and 14th, can I get a mover to put that on the floor? Moved by Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Keveney. Is there any discussion on that? Call the question then, all those in favor? Favor? Any opposed? That is carried. All right. 5B, the CAO Performance Evaluation Committee minutes of November 14th. A mover, moved by Counselor Millen and seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That too is carried, thank you. Item C, Special Committee of the Whole, well, I guess we have four sets of closed minutes. So can I get a mover to put those on the floor? Moved by Counselor Woodbury, oh, seconded by Counselor Carlton. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried, thank you. Okay, item 5D. And maybe what I will do here is turn this over to our clerk. You've all had some sort of an explanation in your packages, but just to make sure we're all on the same understanding, our clerk will explain some things to us. Would you like me to put it on the floor? Okay, very good. Can I get a mover to put the item on the floor? Moved by Counselor McQueen, seconded by Counselor Mackey. Oh, yes.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning, counsel. I just wanted to provide a bit of an overview of the procedural matters in response to this motion that's before you. So the motion currently supported by Gray County Council is to apply for 96 new beds for Gray Gables. The recommendation from the Committee of Management before you today recommends two things. It recommends that County Council amend its original decision to move from 96 to 62 beds in order to proceed with this recommendation, and with regard to the county's procedural bylaw, specifically reconsideration, the Committee of Management also recommends that in accordance with 2.1 of the county's procedural bylaw, County Council waive Section 21.12 of the procedural bylaw being reconsideration, to allow for the reconsideration of both Resolution CW 2719 and CC 8719 to happen at today's meeting. It's important to note that the recommendation from the Committee of Management is only to allow for the reconsideration of the above motions to the extent necessary to support or not support the recommendations from the Committee of Management. Therefore, this reconsideration, if supported by council, does not open up the entire resolution, but only opens up the option to amend the minimum number of beds to apply for from the January 24th meeting, which was endorsed at the February 14th meeting, and the resolution from County Council on the October 29th, October 24th meeting, to direct staff to apply for 96 new beds. Should council support the recommendations from the Committee of Management, the following would then need to happen. A motion to reconsider Resolutions CW 2719 and CC 8719, only to the extent necessary to give effect to the recommendation from Committee of Management, and that council under Section 2.1 of the county's procedural bylaw waive 21.12 being reconsideration, in order to allow for the reconsiderations of the above motions to happen today in order to meet the timelines of the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care application deadline. The motion to waive the section of the procedural bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. This is not a weighted vote in accordance with our procedural bylaw, but it is a required two-thirds vote. Should the motion to waive that section of the procedural bylaw be successful, then there will be a motion to amend those respective resolutions for consideration on the advice of the county solicitor. Since no prior motion was provided on this, a two-thirds vote of council is required as outlined in Robert's Rules of Order. Should council not wish to reconsider the recommendations provided by the Committee of Management, the direction from council will be maintained, and the 96 beds will be applied for. Clear as mud, I know, but I'm hoping that's helpful.
Questions, Counselor Burley?
I'd like to put a motion forward to waive... Okay.
Any further discussion on the minutes and the motion that's currently before us? Then I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Oh, one opposed. That's still carried. Counselor Burley? So moved by Counselor Burley, do we have a seconder for that motion? Seconded by Counselor Robinson? Discussion? Seeing, oh, Counselor Mackey?
Yeah, so just to be clear, we are only discussing waiving the procedural bylaw because we don't have enough time to use our regular process. So this is a vote to suspend our bylaws, which would have us operating under Robert's Rules of Order if it's successful.
Okay, Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Warden. And when we discussed this at our Long Term Care Management, it was, you know, we took some considerable time to make sure that, you know, Heather gave us a complete understanding because it is a little bit confusing. Originally, when the 90, or at least this is my understanding, originally when the 96 beds was applied for, or was asked for by this council, it was in totality. That was to include the 28 at Rockwood. When the Rockwood, but it got applied for separately, and then we were stuck with the 96 beds. So right from the beginning, there was, you know, a number of us in the Long Term Care Management that were thinking 62 was the right number for Gray Gables, so we'd get both Rockwood and Gray Gables up to the 128.
So I'm sorry, Counselor Mackey, I'm going to interrupt you, we're just going to limit discussion for now. You're getting into the meat and potatoes of the issue, which is the amount of beds, which would come next. But we have to first vote on suspending our bylaws, which would get us into that. So I apologize for cutting you off, but we're right now debating whether or not we want to have a two-thirds vote to suspend our bylaws and operate under Robert's Rules of Order. If that happens, then we will have that kind of discussion.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, if I overstepped my grounds. I'm just trying to give a little background and some rationalization as to why we should be suspending. If we don't suspend it, then we will be applying for 96 beds. So what the Long Term Care Committee is trying to bring forward is that 62 is a better number, but if we, you know, don't get the two-thirds, then we will be applying for 96. So I'm just trying to make sure that that point is clear to everyone. Thank you.
Counselor Soever?
Just a clarification, you said we're suspending the procedural bylaw and operating under Robert's rules. Or are we only suspending the application of Section 2112 and not the entire procedural bylaw? Just wanted that clarification.
Thank you for making that clarification, that is accurate. Other discussion? Then I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Okay, so now we can get into, Counselor Burley, did you want to make that motion as well, the next, with respect to the adjustment to the beds?
Look for it.
Okay, so moved by Counselor, sorry?
Just going to say, Mr. Warden, that, just to be clear on the motion, the motion is to proceed with the 62-bed application. And is that all we have to say?
It is outlined in our package. In voting for the 62 beds, I believe, Madam Clerk, we are also suspending two previous resolutions about nine, a minimum of 96 and 96.
We are amending those.
We are amending those.
Yes.
Down to 62. Okay, so moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Robinson. Now we're on to discussion. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
I'm not entirely clear what motion is in front of us right now.
If I may, so Tara has put the motion up there. They are the two previous motions, they were the motions that I spoke about in the procedural overview. They are 2719 from Committee of the Whole of January 24th, it was adopted at the February 14th, 2019 meeting. And the only change there, as you see highlighted, and we thought we'd highlight it for ease of reference, is amending it to remove a minimum of 90 and adding 62 in there. And then the Resolution CC 8719 adopted by council on October 24th has two changes to it. One is exactly what is above, because it was referenced in that resolution. And then if you just scroll down a bit, Tara. And then the motion then to amend from 96 to 62. Those are the only changes recommended right now.
Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I feel like I'm in an auction. I just want to be, like, is the committee sure this time we got the numbers right? Because there's been a lot of discussion around, we need to order these beds or apply for these beds, keep going down. I'm hearing people want more beds, but you guys are telling me, no, we want less. Are you sure this time?
Counselor Burley?
Counselor Millen, the committee was always sure of what we were doing. We're a very concise, well-organized group. We were following direction that was on the floor from County Council, but the 96 beds. We have always felt that the 128 scenario is a better format to try and use. That's why we, as a committee, felt that the 62 beds was the proper way to go. And we have been very consistent in what we're doing, but we're following direction from County Council. We only can recommend to County Council what the committee thinks.
Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden, and I completely agree with the chair. You know, right from the get-go, the Long Term Care Committee certainly thought 128 was the right number for pods of 32. That's the information that we have consistently received from staff, is that 32-unit pods are the right size, and 128 is the right number to go with. You know, that was certainly identified at Rockwood, and we're using the same thinking for Gray Gables. It also provides us with an opportunity at Gray Gables with the 128 rebuild to start that campus of care that some of us are excited to explore. A campus of care gives us an opportunity to have both long-term care and retirement home dementia care all in one site, and you can use some of the revenue from your retirement home to help offset the cost of the long-term care. Thank you.
Counselor Millen?
Counselor Mackey, you talked about a campus of care, and that's a very valid example of how this could all work. You refer to the income from the retirement home. Could you expand on that? Like, I, what numbers are we talking about here? Please?
I wish I had some definitive numbers for you, Counselor Millen. And I don't have any. I know that it's working well in Simcoe County under that model. There's an opportunity there. It's not one, it's not just financial. I believe that, you know, certainly with retirement home, there is a financial component because people spend a lot more on a retirement home bed than what they do in long-term care, which is subsidized by the province. So I believe there is an opportunity there. I don't know to what extent, but I think I'm certainly encouraged that we would have that opportunity to explore that. It wouldn't be a money loser. The retirement home. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Keveney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just as a comparator, I thought I'd share that in Meaford, People Care has purchased our nursing home, and it's not a county home, but just as I say as a comparator, they have received 51 new beds, adding that to the current 77 beds, and Meaford is 128. So they see that as well as a magic number, and they are looking at a campus of care for Meaford. So just to let County Council know that that is occurring in the private sector as well.
Thank you, Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council, and this has been quite a journey, and certainly a well-worth journey to follow. Just going back to, I guess, the individual that originally moved the 90 beds back in January, which was followed up in February. What got confusing, I think, was is when it got, so first motion was to support Gray Gables, which was the first motion, the second motion that we would apply for a minimum of 90 beds. When that got ratified, I guess in February, we made a slight change to the motion with regards to Gray Gables to also add in that motion that we would apply for 28 beds for Rockwood. And I guess the math, so the math, as Counselor Mackey has indicated, the math has always been 62 plus 28 is 90. So I think that's maybe where that confusion of 90 originated from, but certainly that was what I think is, Counselor Burley said, is the direction came from this floor. Moving forward then, and I, as I think Counselor Mackey had indicated also, that when it came back to the Management Committee, they looked at the 90, and the 32 pods is sort of what they go with. So that recommendation, and I can't speak for the committee, I guess that's why they suggested 96 would be that number. And as reminding all of County Council, our staff brought back that report at our last County Council meeting with some more information, more definite numbers in the sense of what would be the right amount. And I think that's what got refined, I guess to Counselor Millen, that refined that 62 a little bit more definely. So I think, I don't think it's anybody's fault or anybody, you know, it's been a working process to where we are today. I think it's been a well-worth process in the sense, and a learning process. I mean, there's going to be a lot more moving forward. But I do recall that when we did pass that motion back in January, discussion around this table was that the current 66-bed number at Gray Gables needed to increase, because if we decide, you know, this floor decided we're going to keep Gray Gables, we're moving forward, then we need to increase the efficiencies of Gray Gables, and that was to add more beds. And the 128 model did come from, and we did see that at our last County Council meeting, that for Rockwood, that 128 is that right number for that facility, and that's sort of where a lot of the conversation then sort of led to, is that 128. Also, just to follow up from the last County Council meeting, with regards to the new build of Gray Gables and having that assisted living, we don't have that numbers, but I'll reiterate with Counselor Mackey that that is what is working with regards to Simcoe County, is it's an offset cost from the assisted living that does help the additional cost for long-term care. So moving forward, we do need to look at that campus of care, and certainly look forward to this motion being supported and us moving on in that journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, so far, we've heard from Counselor Burley saying that this committee is totally organized, and then we just heard an explanation from Counselor McQueen about how confusing it is and why it's so confusing. We've had 96 beds for a long time now, and we didn't care how many beds we got, we just thought we'd go for 96 beds, and whatever we got, we would either turn them down or whatever, but totally, totally unorganized. In the minutes, it said that the committee discussed the rationale of going to 128 beds. It's the first time I've heard the word rationale. They're asking for 62 beds because it's the least expensive. It's the first time I've seen you care about costs, because we, there was a motion on the floor to get a financial report from staff, you turned that down, and then you asked for a financial presentation from Kevin Wepler, who, I don't know if there's another person in this building that would have more respect than Kevin Wepler, and I couldn't have been the only one to see how uncomfortable he was two weeks ago with his presentation. Only because it's a bad decision. It's a bad financial decision. Counselor McQueen explained last week, his only explanation was, we're providing a service just like roads. Except for roads, we're providing roads for 100% of the people, and I explained to you last week how, just with Lehman alone, 40% of our seniors are being subsidized. Just 40%. 60% don't need it. We've got hundreds of seniors in Gray County that can't afford their electricity bill, but we're making a financial decision like this. This has been a dog's breakfast since the start. Don't tell me you're organized, that you're up and down and all over the place, and I think I'm just going to wait until the next meeting, when you come back and ask for 40 beds, and maybe by January 1st, you'll come to your senses and ask for enough.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, appreciate the time at the microphone. Long Term Care Committee has been working through this since January, and we've looked at various numbers, what would be efficient and compatible, and I'd submit, Counselor O'Leary, perhaps our minutes do need to be more detailed. I quite get that, and that's a step forward, so we'd look for more detailed minutes. Just to reflect on what the conversation and the intent is of the committee. I support this as the seconder. I know it's a refined number for 62. We've had the discussion on this, we've had the report. I do want to impress upon council that there is an application process deadline, and that we do require more beds here in Gray County for residents. I would respectfully ask Gray County Council to support the motion before us. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any further hands, so that said, maybe it's time for me to call the question. So all those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? That is carried. I'm now looking for, we're on to item number six, we're going to be going into a closed meeting, I'm looking for a mover to take us in there. Moved by Counselor Woodbury, seconded by Counselor Desai. We're going to close. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. So we'll take a second to organize ourselves, and we're going to close session. Kim, who needs to stay? Kim, who needs to stay?
Minutes, sorry, agenda and nothing else. We are now on to item number seven, bylaws. Could I get a mover to put Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Milne? Do we have any discussion on those bylaws? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Our favorite, number eight, good news and celebration. Counselor Desai.
I felt I was being silenced. So for good news and celebrations, Mr. Warden, I've got a few announcements with regards to Christmas parades. As you mentioned this morning, it is winter. Winter is coming for those Game of Thrones fans. We've got three events this weekend in Gray Islands, four actually. We've got our Christmas tree lighting tomorrow at 6:30 PM right downtown Markdale. We've got a Christmas tree and everything. And if the members from Owen Sound decide to show up, we'll show them how to not start a fire in the middle of starting a light. November 30th.
I'm not sure a restaurant owner should be talking about that.
About fires? Saturday afternoon, we have our Markdale Santa Claus Christmas parade. I've given up hope on any presents. I'm expecting a lump of coal, but I don't know with carbon pricing these days, maybe that's asking too much.
Maybe some ice cream.
And maybe some ice cream, yeah. In the evening on Saturday, we've got the St. Hampton Santa Claus Parade at 6:30 PM in St. Hampton, December 1st, which is a special day because God granted a very special gift to this world on that day, namely me. Feversham has its Santa Claus Parade at 10:30 AM, meeting at the Osprey Arena. Further, this is moving on to a different topic. Last week, I had the honor of being part of advocacy there at Queen's Park through being on the Board of Directors for Ontario Good Roads Association. OGRA met with 56, I believe was the final number, ministers and critics at Queen's Park. I had the pleasure of meeting with a number of MPPs and critic roles. We talked about three things. We talked about the province mandating rap, which is not a form of music, but recycled asphalt pavement. The other thing we talked about was the bureaucracy surrounding municipal class environmental assessments. And the third thing we talked about was Vision Zero, which is a traffic management initiative, which started in Sweden, I believe. I could be wrong. Personally, a very pleasing moment, interesting moment. I don't know the right adjective for that, but I did get to see Agnes McPhail's name engraved on the walls at Queen's Park because they do have the list of all MPPs who've served at Queen's Park engraved in the wall. And it was, sorry?
And where is she from?
She was born in some place, well, it's Porton Station, which currently is in some forgotten township.
She was born in Gray County.
Gray County. She's from Gray County. I'm very tempted to say okay boomer right now, but I notice I'm outnumbered.
I'm Mr. Ward.
And with that, we also had a block of recycled asphalt pavement. It's really nice. It's got sharp edges, and it would carry very well from here to that side of the room. I'd like you to know, Mr. Milne. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you for the update, and it sounds like Santa Claus is going to be very busy in your neck of the woods over the next weekend. And I'm surprised that there isn't the Counselor Desai birthday parade. Counselor Keveney.
Mr. Warden, thank you. And following in the vein of Counselor Desai, Meaford has its annual Christmas parade on December 11th, or I'm sorry, December 7th, I apologize, with the tree lighting and a window unveiling. And Santa, of course, will be visiting Meaford. This Sunday is the Golden Aiers Christmas concert at the United Church at 2:00. If anybody still needs to do their tourism visit, come to Meaford and hear the Golden Aiers. And it will come up later in the meeting, but I just wanted to reference the meeting on December 11th in Meaford in relation to TC Energy. There's a lot of discussion about that project in Meaford, and I think all of county council might be interested in what's being proposed there, the pump storage facility in Meaford. So do encourage you to attend that meeting December 11th. Doors open at 5:30.
Thank you. Counselor Keveney, Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Just as far as Santa Claus's parades, on the 14th of December, Chatsworth will be hosting their Santa Claus Parade. It begins at 10:30, Brian. And the night previous, the 13th, the Ag Society is doing a light up the night, and we will be unveiling our new concept designs for our community hub. So that will be taking place at the Chatsworth Municipal Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey. Counselor Boddy.
Thank you. Speaking of Santa Claus, I remind everyone to come to Georgian College tomorrow when Bill Walker will be unwrapping some announcement on training. And as we know, training is very important, the skills training in our area in the coming future. And we around the table have been working very hard with Sittaham School, et cetera, so I'm really looking forward to that announcement. I think Tara sent out notices, or Heather, I'm not sure which, yesterday. It's 3:30 at Georgian College, and I think it'd be great if as many of us that can be there would get there.
Thank you, Counselor Boddy. Counselor Soever.
Last night, Linda Wykes, who runs the local newspaper, called the Review, and our community was recognized at the Canadian Journalists for Freedom of Expression Gala in Toronto. The gala called a night to honor courageous reporting is described on the website as Canada's leading free expression event that raises crucial funds to continue important work in protecting journalists and promoting freedom of expression. Linda was recognized for facing down a $450,000 libel and slander lawsuit brought over material she published in her little newsletter, The Review. The case was thrown out in court as a strategic lawsuit against public participation, which is a lawsuit that is deemed to be improperly brought with the intention of censoring, intimidating, and silencing critics by burdening them with the cost of illegal defense until they abandon their criticism or opposition. And Linda won that case and was awarded a cost. So the journalist did a order for bravery. Running a small business, obviously $450,000 could be devastating to a person. So for a person to have the courage to stick with their convictions and continue to bring us the news of what's going on is, you know, very courageous. The Old Fashioned Christmas is in Thornbury on December 14th. There's a number of events, including roasting chestnuts, axe throwing, so let's keep the long-term care out of that. But certainly, all should be welcome to come. It is very old-fashioned, so we close down the main street and everybody, the whole community comes together. In a more modern theme, the Blumination Trail at the Village is opening up on Saturday night this week. And so that's quite the trail. You walk around and they have some very exciting modern light displays. So we have the old and the new happening for Christmas, and that's all.
Thank you. It's exciting to hear there'll be chestnuts roasting on an open fire.
They actually have fires on the main street.
There you go.
On the side, did you hear that?
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. I have two things, if I might. I would first like to say that I'm very pleased that the municipality of West Gray has just completed six vision sessions in our communities. These sessions presented an opportunity to connect and communicate with our residents. And also, it was an opportunity to share in discussion about our draft vision plan for the municipality, which is 2019 to 2022. Also, I'd like to say that our municipality, like all of your municipalities, are involved in a number of festive activities for the Christmas season. And if citizens and those individuals interested in coming to West Gray, just go on westgray.com, and there's a complete listing of activities, locations, and times.
Thank you. Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A week from Sunday is a non-motorized Santa Claus Parade in Kemble. There's more animals, there is people, so it should be a fantastic parade. I didn't think it was possible, but on December 3rd at 6 o'clock, George Bluffs gets a lot brighter again. The Christmas lights are being turned on in Shadow Lake. Thank you. 6 o'clock.
No, Kemble is 1 o'clock.
No, I thought you said, you were asking about the lights?
Kemble. 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
It's an all-day event.
Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd be remiss if I didn't announce that the Holstein Bridge is open. And yes, and I just want to thank the contractor, the consultants, and Pat and the Taps crews. The bridge is looking really good. I've had a lot of really nice comments about it. People are loving it. So thank you, Pat, and to your team as well. Thank you.
That is truly good news. Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and county council. A few things. Our new Foodland store is fasting towards completion, and they're looking at the first part of February of opening. So lots happening there, which also spurs on our second set of streetlights. So we're going to be a two-street-light town in Markdale, so that's sort of a positive thing. We had an opening the other night at one of our local businesses, Sea and Ski, and we talked about a number of things, and our local CBO, our building official, was there. And I mentioned about the hospital. And so as a side, we've started to accept building permits online. And one of those submissions was from the Grey Bruce Health Services for a new hospital. So we were really surprised to hear that. And so I was pretty happy about hearing that because it's only been since about 2004 when there was a campaign to raise 12 million-plus dollars, which the county had committed to $1 million, less than the property value for the current site. So again, that goes into, and we talk about campus of care and health, or campus of care in that sense, and that will be a real key thing for where the new site for the hospital will be. It's just behind the current Gray Gables. And certainly, the community has been steadfast, but certainly, it's been a long time coming. I know when Minister of Health, Minister Hoskins, made the announcement in September of 2014, that a new hospital was coming, and it's been a long road, but certainly well worth the wait, Mr. Warden. So we'll keep you abreast on how that rolls out, but certainly, that was great news to hear that a building permit was being submitted for. So great news. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands.
We'd like an update on the airport. We haven't heard one.
Santa needs a place to fly in. Okay, so I'm now looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Gamble, twitched, and Counselor Desai, seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. We'll take a short break and come back for committee of the hall.